All right, we're live on Facebook.
Okay, let's start over again. Good evening to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan and the priority-based budgeting workshop. It is 5:30. We'd like to start off with a roll call by Madam Clerk when you're ready.
Third blood.
Present remotely from Battle Creek, Michigan in Calhoun County.
Vice Mayor Ferris.
Present attending for Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Herring.
President from Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Lance.
Present attending from Battle Creek, Michigan.
Mayor Banky.
Present attending from Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Morris. Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Sophia.
Present attending in Battle Creek, Michigan.
And Commissioner Wilson.
Present remotely from Battle Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Commissioners for being here at the workshop. I'd like to open up for public comment. Sarah, do you have anyone in the queue for public comment?
I do not have any callers, but Rebecca, is this a time when some of our guests will be speaking or? You're muted.
Nope, they'll be presenting, so I'm not doing public comment.
Okay, so we have no one in public comment. We will reserve a section for public comment at the end of the meeting too. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Rebecca. Rebecca, good afternoon, good evening. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I just want to make a note that I do see Commissioner Morris. So Vicky, great, thank you. Welcome Commissioner Morris. I'm excited about tonight. It feels like it wasn't five years ago that we started on our priority-based budgeting journey. And the faces at the, well, was the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, now as Resource X, have changed except for one. So I get the pleasure of introducing the Resource X team, who's going to kick us off with the beginning presentation. And I know that Eric will be sharing his screen and then we'll move to our survey results presentation and Jessica's going to share her screen then. But like I said, we're excited to again welcome back the priority-based budgeting team. You'll see Chris Fabian, and so those of you who were with us five years ago will certainly recognize Chris Fabian. He, you know, he's been a constant for us throughout our priority-based budgeting journey. But we have certainly enjoyed getting to know Eric Keck and Bradley Stecker, both of the priority-based budgeting teams. And we're enjoying working with them as we take this opportunity to revisit our community results and then later our definitions to help really guide our work over the next five years. This is an exciting time also because we welcomed five new Commissioners in November. And so it's a really great opportunity for us to just take a moment to go back and talk a little bit about the foundation of priority-based budgeting and our journey in Battle Creek and then where we are headed. So with that, I think I'm kicking it off to Chris, but please tell me if I'm wrong.
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris and I'm going to kick it off to Eric and then I'll come in a little bit. But thank you Rebecca and thank you all for having us continue to be a part of your priority-based budgeting journey and this evolution in your work. I'll turn it over to you, Eric Keck, to go ahead and get us started.
Thank you, Chris. And Commission, it's a pleasure and an honor to be with you here this evening. I love to speak to elected officials. As a former city manager for 20 years, it's good to be back in a commission meeting again. Tonight, I'm just going to, again, we're going to be talking about community results update. And we're going to go over a little agenda here. First and foremost, I get the pleasure to speak to you about what priority-based budgeting is or PBB, as you will hear me refer to it throughout the evening. Secondarily, we're going to talk about why would you want to utilize priority-based budgeting in the first place? We're going to hear from Chris a little bit about your history of priority-based budgeting in Battle Creek. And then we're going to get into the nuts and bolts of the evening, and that is a review of your community results. We're going to look at some survey results. We're going to identify and confirm desired results as well as set the stage for you to begin to talk about result definitions and how to find those results as you move forward. I will say, if you have any questions during this presentation, by all means, stop me. I am prone sometimes to get moving like a freight train, so just interrupt me and I won't be offended because I want to make sure that we're able to provide you with some clarity this evening as well as a greater awareness about what priority-based budgeting is. So Battle Creek and PBB, you do go way back, back to 2015 with the initial planning and then the implementation of the methodology. And as a practitioner myself who had the opportunity to implement priority-based budgeting in two communities, I will say that the tools and the methods have really radically changed since that time, but so is your community. And so we're going to talk again about how to fit priority-based budgeting and its results with budgeting process like hand and glove this evening. So what's priority-based budgeting in the first place? Well, to simply state it, it's this. It really is a methodology in a toolset that is designed to aid an organization with creation of data layers that help to serve and inform managerial decision-making. But we're going to talk a lot more about management decision-making and the tool itself in a little bit. But as you can see from the graphic here, mostly you're public. You first start out with the creation of the data layer of programs where, in other words, you're translating your line items into programs and services that your organization provides. Secondarily, you cost those programs. In other words, you're allocating line items and those costs towards the different programs that you've just created. And specifically, the goal here is to create a true and accurate picture of the true cost of doing business for the city of Battle Creek. Third, and that's what we're going to be spending some time tonight talking about, is the identification of results. Why have results? Results answer a really important question, and that question is, why do we exist as an organization? You can probably, as elected officials, point to a number of things that kind of dictate why you exist, whether it's a city charter, articles of incorporation as a municipal corporation in the state of Michigan. But more importantly, this allows you to establish anywhere between five and eight overarching strategies or reasons, if you will, for your existence that everything else that you do will be measured by. Your programs will be scored and aligned with these particular results. And so results are really, really important. The next step or step four is a review or what we call a scoring of your programs. We do that in two ways. Each and every program, and we're going to talk about 585 unique programs that you have in Battle Creek, have been scored against your results as well as scored against five basic program attributes. And we'll talk about those attributes in a bit as well, but there's a scoring component. And that's where the prioritization comes from. Again, what you're looking for are those programs and services which are in the highest alignment with your community results as well as basic program attributes, just more data points. In other words, to help inform your decision-making around not only the services that you deliver, but also the money that you, as elected officials, will be allocating towards each of those programs. But I'm here to tell you one thing, and I'll use a religious example and forgive me for doing it. But we don't want you just to be converts, to convert to this methodology and toolset. We want you to become disciples. In other words, we want you to be so involved in the use of your data that you want to create it and massage it and keep utilizing that data to make decisions for not only your community, but also to spread in your region. So if you could begin to talk about how to leverage your tax dollars the best way for your region as a whole. So priority-based budgeting, first and foremost, it is a management decision-making tool. And there are some bullet points I want to go over with you. This is not a finance initiative. In other words, a lot of our clients sometimes make the mistake of camping this in their finance department. And again, because it's a management decision-making tool, everybody who touches a management decision or everyone who touches data should be very interested in this methodology itself. As well as, then our name is a little bit misleading because we're not really providing you with a budgeter per se, but rather data that influences decisions around your budgetary making and budget process itself. So as I said before, the goal is not just to create data and have it sit on a shelf someplace. We want organizations to be very intentional and active in looking at their data and using that resultant data to make decisions that help to radically transform an organization and its community. So again, if we look at priority-based budgeting from a decision-making standpoint, we're actually like geographic information systems creating layers of data with you. And again, it all starts with the line item. The line item never goes away from our perspective and the use of our methods and tools. As a matter of fact, basically what it's doing is a set of desired goals and results are set for the organization up high. Then what we're doing is helping you to recognize programs at that, a layer above the line item that will help to again instruct your organization, instruct your community, and anybody else who looks at Battle Creek to say, what is it that we do? We do, we provide 585 disparate programs or services. Next, what we're going to do is we're going to cost each and every one of those programs. What I mean by a cost is again, we're going to help you to figure out the true cost of doing business for each of those programs. In other words, we're attributing line item data into the cost of your programs. So at the end of the day, we'll answer the second question of PBB, and that is, what does it cost for us to provide the services that we provide? And do our programs actually generate any revenue? Because in some cases, your programs do. From there, what we're doing is we're scoring your programs, the program attribute level or layer that you see here. And again, we're scoring them against, every program's being scored against your results, community-wide results, as well as five basic program attributes, and I'm going to go into those here very shortly. But those scores then become the means by which programs get looked at through a lens of quartiles, either quartile one through quartile four. Quartile one, meaning those programs that are most highly aligned with your results. Quartile four, not as much, but just because a program sits in the lower quartile doesn't mean necessarily that it goes away. Again, there are any of a number of data points that you're going to be collecting throughout the implementation of priority-based budgeting, which we already have, that place those into various buckets of prioritization. Then lastly, the top level, the top layer, where we want to encourage our clients to work towards is this. Taking that data and using it in a meaningful way to transform a program or a service because we firmly believe that every program has a future. Talking about your programmatic data helps to actually transform the way in which those programs are provided or services are rolled out to your constituents. Now, we think about our toolset. It looks a little bit like this. This is the Battle Creek program inventory. This is just a snapshot of your online tool. And again, I mentioned this before, but you have 585 unique programs currently in your toolset. And each of those programs, just as depicted on this screen, it's broken down into service type, community-oriented. That means a program that is community-facing. You perhaps have employees who are out in the community providing programs to residents and businesses and visitors. Or a governance program, which means that's an internal program that is geared towards ensuring that it is being provided in the best possible fashion. In order where, in other words, you're being excellent stewards and excellent governors of those particular programs. And you're going to have a department that these programs are housed within. And then some other date, the program's name and the program description, those are very important data points in and of themselves that could actually lead to some discussions that could improve the way in which your programs are rolled out. The next layer of data is that program costing layer. This is just a screenshot of your online tools again. And this area houses, again, all of your programs, what they cost, and again, whether or not they generate any revenue. And then finally, for our discussion tonight, before we get into results, you have a layer that is your scoring. This is a snapshot of basic program attributes. And I mentioned these basic program attributes before. These five things, in and of themselves, are very powerful questions that we challenge our clients and only use just once. We ask that you revisit them regularly. So these questions are this. Is your program mandated? If it is mandated, what level of mandate is it? The highest level of mandate obviously is a federal or state mandate, but you could also have a city charter, city code, resolution ordinance, a best practice, or no mandate at all. And what I found in my time on the public side, it's just asking these questions is worth the price of admission because it really challenges people to think beyond the status quo and think, well, why do we need this? Why do we provide this program? And it really helps to expunge the thing that nobody wants to hear, and that is, I don't know, that's just the way we've always done it around here. So thinking about mandate, next question's a little bit more difficult and sometimes strikes fear and anxiety in employees, but that is reliance on the city to provide a program. And in this particular attribute, you're really asking yourself this question. Are we the only organization that could provide this service, both publicly and or privately? But then that's not necessarily saying because you may not be the only organization that you're going to do away with that. Again, it provides yet another data point or another conversation about whether or not you are the best organization to provide a service or maybe there is a better way to do it more efficiently and effectively. Just another thought. Third is cost recovery. Do any of our programs have a cost recovery component? And if they do, this is an excellent portion or opportunity for the commission to get engaged to talk about from a policy level perspective, is this an equitable fee that we're charging? Is it too prohibitive and it's not allowing everyone, no matter their economic status, to participate in our programs, whether they be recreational or otherwise? But cost recovery is a great place for elected officials to look at from a policy perspective. Next question is, what is the demand for the program? In other words, is this program increasing in demand, decreasing, flat? Again, these are all data points that are really instructive and informative when it comes to your city management's team as well as the management team as a whole, talking about your programs and service delivery to determine what needs to be done in the future with a particular provision of a program. And lastly, another very important data point or attribute is the population served. In other words, what portion of the population does a given program serve? Is it very narrow? Is it a senior program or is it very broad, fire, fire response, EMS, those types of programs? Or in between? What portion of the population serves? All of these scoring data points are then aggregated into a model again, along with the scoring of your results. That helps again to provide the management team as well as you as elected officials in the community with a glimpse of an excellent portrait of the services and things that are going on in the community rather than just looking at a giant, fat, thick budget book with line item data that really is obfuscating, confusing, and difficult for the public to understand or even access what's going on with your budget. As I said earlier, we believe at Resource X that every program has a future. So again, as you've already done, and your organization has done an outstanding job, and I'm not just blowing smoke here when we say this. We love working with Rebecca because she's taken ownership of PBB for Battle Creek and is dealing with it in a way that's very professional. In other words, not only has it been the data creation, but it's been, let's look at their data, let's look for insights. And these aren't just intuitions or gut feel about what your data is telling you, but more importantly, where can we have what I call adult conversations about the programs that we provide? That last step at the bottom here is taking action. Again, we want people to have their data, we want them to look at it, but then we want organizations to say, we're going to take this data, all these data points that we have, coupled with political will of your commission, your results, the things that your citizens want, we're going to weigh all this, and then we're going to be making decisions that are going to be actionable to help provide services that are relevant and necessary for our community. And so that in a quick nutshell is a review of what priority-based budgeting is. I'll just open up at this point. Are there any questions before I turn the time back over to Chris Fabian, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the history of PBB in Battle Creek?
Commissioners, if you have any questions, just feel free to ask the presenters, okay?
If not, I'll turn the time over to Chris, and Chris, I'll go ahead and move the slides for you.
That's great. And make sure I'm off mute. Awesome. Well, thanks, everybody. Eric has got me all excited at least about the future of taking action on the data and where priority-based budgeting is headed. I'm going to go back in time, not this far back, but I found this cool picture of Battle Creek. And I'm from Michigan, so I have been eternally grateful for all the time we've been able to work together. But it was 2015. Eric, if we go to the next slide. Battle Creek was the second organization to actually implement priority-based budgeting. Kalamazoo was the first, and following your great work, Ann Arbor has implemented, East Lansing and Lansing have implemented, Ferndale has implemented. There are likely others, but you have, you've definitely become a leader in the state of Michigan, and you've become a leader in the overall priority-based budgeting community, which now has, up to this moment, I think we've passed 300 organizations in total since we began our work and really a movement that spans across the United States and into Canada. Most recently, even in, I'm sure all of you have your latest copy of the Government Finance Review, hot on your coffee tables, but Duluth, Minnesota has the most recent cover story on their first implementations of priority-based budgeting. So you were a leader and there have been many more who have followed you as this has become a national best practice. Eric, we go ahead to the next slide. When we began, this is a screen capture of one of our slides, actually from a presentation we made. Rebecca had mentioned the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting. The starting place for your role as elected officials or your predecessors was to create the results that define why do you exist? This is how we get to the prioritization in priority-based budgeting, is we're asking a fundamental question. For the resources you have, how would you ever know if you're putting them in the right place? And the establishment of results is where we begin. I put these graphic images up there as well to show you. We, our first efforts included some council interaction. We worked from a development action plan that, if you squint your eyes, was a strategic planning document from way back when, before 2015. And you created a starting place that actually has lasted you pretty well up through today. And Eric, as you click to the next slide or the next image, what we did, this is the tool that we made, it was a spreadsheet back then, to gather some feedback from council members and department staff and ultimately citizens overall as well to try to come up with, what are the fundamental reasons for your existence? And could we come up with some basic themes? So as you look from the top, something like fosters economic vitality. The next ensures residents and visitors feel safe in Battle Creek. And the third, I won't read all of them, but the third develops and maintains reliable and up-to-date infrastructure. Our work was to come to understand, why do you think that you exist? And results for that foundational level that would begin our prioritization process. Eric, as you go to the next slide, the second step was, once having determined those foundational reasons for your existence, we wanted to get a little bit more information to get specific about what those results actually mean. One of those result areas about feeling safe or creating a sense of a safe community that was shining brightly in Battle Creek is a similar result, as you might imagine, for other cities who we work with. Many, many leaders of local government believe that one of the primary reasons for existence is to create a safe place. But when it comes down to what it takes to create that sense of safety, the way that you defined it in Battle Creek looks different than where I live here in Denver, Colorado. And you took, the city and your predecessors took the step to launch a citizen engagement exercise to gather feedback on all of their opinions for how those results are achieved. So as you look through the Survey Monkey tool that we used back then, we were, we would get the citizens started and say, when the city does something and participant, your job is to fill in the blank, then we achieve economic vitality or we achieve a sense of a safe community. And the busy spreadsheet that Eric posted is another screen capture just down memory lane from your archives of all the responses that citizens were contributing. And they were very thoughtful to tell you all, to tell us, what does it take to achieve economic vitality? And our job, Eric, as you click once more, was to take all that input, all of those responses and try to synthesize them into what we call result definitions. So these are vocabulary terms in priority-based budgeting, but you have results. And results are why your local government exists, and they are the basis for prioritization. And result definitions are the clarifying elements to help us understand exactly, as Eric is demonstrating here, what it takes to achieve a result. Now, as Eric has this slide up, you see one of your results was economic vitality. That's the central bubble. And then all of those bubbles, like electrons orbiting around the nucleus of economic vitality were the result definitions. And there, we did our best, but our methodology has improved from 2015. But we tried, we tried to honor the nuance, the specific ways that citizens said things and create a robust result definition for these result areas. And that had its benefits. People can see their fingerprints clearly on a result definition. But most importantly, as it comes to the use of these result maps, departments who have to evaluate the programs and services that they are providing in order to tell you or score a program, used these definitions as a logic framework. If I were to try to persuade you that something I offer has anything to do with economic vitality in this case, I would have to use any number of those result definitions as my case. That's my case I'm trying to prove that my program impacts a result definition or many of them. And therefore, that is my justification for why my program has anything to do with influencing economic vitality or that one to the right, well-planned growth and development. The downfall is that, I admit, probably like I am in this presentation right now and way back when in those result definition creations, we were wordy. And that wordiness had negative consequences as well. Whereas on the positive side, people could see their fingerprints. On the negative side, man, it's really hard to understand all of the different aspects that lead to economic vitality without sifting through those specific definitions and really trying to figure out all the different things that they're saying. So as Jessica ultimately comes to open up your latest and evolved attempt to gather citizen feedback, I think one of the things that we have found most effective, and I hope that you will appreciate this too, is that it's become more concise. People are, their attention is asked for in any number of different directions these days. And so to get to the point and get specific and clear about results and definitions was our aspirational goal this time around and part of the work we'll be doing in the workshop. But back to memory lane, this was the process that we went through. You were able to effectively create a priority-based budget, which meant that you took your programs, like Eric talked about. You allocated your budget. You allocated your budget. So every program had a price tag, those programs were evaluated and scored relative to those results. And as you see in that infographic about Q1, meaning quartile one, Q2, quartile two, quartile three and quartile four, that is a portrayal of your budget based on the programs and their influence on the results. Where quartile one programs are those that have the greatest degree of influence on your results. Quartile two are programs that have a substantial degree of influence on results, just not as, as much as quartile one. Quartile three and quartile four, where quartile four programs have the least compared to everything else that you're doing. Influence on your results and those basic program attributes. And, and we simply wanted to end here as a, your, your memory lane retrospective to say, your spending array proved that you were in a healthy spot. You, you don't want to have that graph look the opposite way, right? Where the majority of your spending is in quartile four programs that have the least amount to do with the results you're trying to achieve. That being said, as you all know, no local government today exists in a place of pure abundance forever where you have infinite resources to do all you want to do. So even though you have a healthy array, the objective moving forward is always to be in touch with the results that are most relevant now and moving into the future and aligning your scarce resources with those results in as optimal of, of a way as you possibly can. And so it does set the stage to, with, with you, as it does with all of our communities, to ask the question again. What results are most important to you today? And as you look towards the future? And as I turn it back over to Eric, that really is the agenda that we have in front of us is to talk about your latest citizen engagement efforts as it pertains to your most current results and definitions.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm going to quickly talk about why we're here today, why we're here tonight. This particular screenshot is again from your current PBB tools. And it is showing your current results. These are your current results of economic vitality, environment, growth and development, infrastructure, neighborhoods, recreational, safe community, transportation. And then an overall rating, which basically is your internal governance. But what we're really here to do tonight is this, begin the reexamination of the fundamental purpose for your existence. As we said, the results asked or answer the question that's asked, why do we exist? And these are the things that in 2015, 2016, as you originally implemented, were the foundation for that existence. We're also going to be doing this, we're going to be looking at, which I think is just fantastic. Some really good robust survey data and input from your residents regarding your community results. Responses are from individuals who have said, this is why we feel you should exist, what's important. Then we're going to do this, we're going to help you either affirm or adjust the community results that you currently have with the data that you received from your citizens just this last few months. So that's what we're going to be doing. I will say this, we will have a need for a phase two workshop because we're not going to be able to complete all of the work this evening. So specifically a second workshop is going to be needed to dig deep into establishing the definitions of those agreed upon results. And like Chris said, it's really important that you provide as much clarity as possible for whatever results that you, you actually choose for a couple of reasons again. We, like you, I know are, are very concerned that organizations create clarity, accessibility to those results and their definitions. But then again, citizens clearly understand why you exist, what you do, how much it costs. And all the different data points that we've already discussed this evening. But more importantly too, or just as important, I should say, that your city manager's team has very good information and data to build a strategy and a city manager's work plan from. Having too many results, too many nebulous definitions could create major problems with respect to a manager's ability to, to put together a work plan that's achievable. But secondarily, this, your result definitions will become vitally important very quickly for you to do a couple of different things. Number one, aligning your programs and services as you rescore your programs again against these new results. But again, also with ensuring that you have solid data quickly from which to make decisions. So I'm going to stop my share at this point and I'm going to turn the time over to Jessica. But if you have questions for Chris and I on the, again, priority based budgeting primer that we just gave you, by all means, please let us know and we'll happy to answer them.
Okay, since I'm not hearing anything, I'll go ahead and share my screen, but anybody jump in if you have questions before we move on to the actual survey. Okay, so we are going to jump into the survey. I kind of led the discussion on how we formed that and shared it with the community. So let's just jump right in. So our survey details, the image you'll see there is a postcard that we sent out to the entire community. About 16,000 households midway through the survey period. So let me back up for a moment. We, in talking through with our Resource X team and our internal city team, we decided to go with one survey for both talking about the results or our city goals and then the definitions, which we'll talk about at the second workshop. And the reason for that is to have continuity. We know that we go through periods where we survey a lot and other agencies in the community survey a lot. And so we didn't want to come to the community to ask about the results and then come back again later and have them try to remember that and pair that with the definitions. So we wanted that to be one smooth process for everyone. Chris mentioned that we used Survey Monkey the first time around. This time we used a web based survey platform similar to Survey Monkey called Polco. And that worked great for our purpose. Our survey was open for about a month from mid-March to mid-April. And we had our Spanish translation posted at the same time as the English. The Burmese was posted about 10 days later. So we had those three options for everyone. Are, you'll see the list of promotions and marketing we did. I mentioned the postcard to get something out by mail. We did some advertising, various updates in publications where we share city information. The website, of course, several social media reminders and some of our other community agencies shared that out as well so that we could get that, the survey links out to everyone. We also had a call-in option. You may know that we have a 311 Information Center running with the city now. And so we brought back Jacob Schock, who worked with us previously in the City Manager's Office to staff a phone specifically to take survey calls. We wanted to make sure, we also gave access to those without internet access or anyone who was uncomfortable taking the survey online. So Jacob took about 10 calls, nine of them were English speakers and one was a Burmese speaker. However, the interpreter line unfortunately dropped during that call, but the caller went to take it online instead. And overall Jacob reported that this went really smoothly. So that was a, a good option that we were able to use. What we asked people to do in the survey, and you'll see a little screenshot there of what the intro looked like, was to choose up to eight city goals or results. As Chris and Eric talked about, we don't want to get so many that we're not able to meet them or get lost in those. And so we wanted people to try for eight out of the 13 that we offered. We did use logic in this survey, so we didn't, we tried not to give people information overload and too many questions that they didn't need to answer. So for each result that they chose that they thought ranked in that top eight, then they received the definitions questions for those results. And we asked them to choose the importance of each of those. All of, all of the questions included an open ended follow-up. And you know, we would normally do that anyway on a survey, but that was especially important here because for this survey, we offered our community the list of 13 result options. And then for each of those, we offered them a list of potential definitions. And you'll see this the next time when we talk about definitions. But as Chris was talking about how, how much information we tried to get into each definition last time. We tried to keep those really succinct and clear this time. So you'll see that as we go through. And you know, they, they also talked about the most that these are, these are things a lot of communities do. You know, safety, like Chris said, is something that all of us focus on. And so we wanted to give people those common options and see which of those were the most important as well as giving them the chance to offer their own. So what that looked like was 836 total from the community. And two of those were Spanish. No one actually filled out the Burmese version of the survey. And so for the numbers and percentages that you'll see as we go through this, I've added everything together and recalculated the percentages. Which didn't, didn't change any of the responses in any significant way. And no, none of the, neither of the Spanish respondents answered the open ended questions. They just chose from the options that we gave. So run through the demographics really quickly. You'll see that we did have a slight majority of women. And we also learned through this process, which was great because we're already using what we learned on additional surveys as we go forward. But when we are asking for someone's gender, someone brought to our attention the fact that the choices that we use from and I'll say that these demographic questions were pulled from Polco's library of standard demographic questions. But the, the choices could have been better. So we know that if we ask for someone's gender, that we should have used different choices than we did, although we offered a different option, asking if someone identified as something other than male or female, we didn't really ask that correctly. It should have been man, woman, non-binary or other. And so we learn and we grow and we will know that as we go forward with surveys. You'll see that we also had majority of homeowners who answered the survey. Here you can see the, we asked for the highest level of education, household income. If they had children who are minors, so majority did not, who answered? Majority did not have adults 65 or over, which is how we ask the age questions. And then you can see the, the racial and ethnic identity that people gave. Okay, so let's jump into the results. So these are in the order that people gave. And these would be our top eight. So you'll see that safety and economy and utilities were our top three. We had education, environment and recreation tied. And physical appearance and transportation and mobility. And then I said we had 13, so the lower five are listed here and those are diversity, equity and inclusion, arts and culture, community engagement, governance and community design. To talk about the open ended comments for a moment, we had close to 200 comments for the results question, which was great. Asking if there was another broad city goal that people would place in their top eight. Most of those going through those fit within the 13 result choices that we gave them. Many of the comments people gave were more of a definition to the other goals. So the examples I give here are like policing services, that's included in safety. Green initiative citywide, that would be considered environment. So almost all of those comments fit into that. A lot of our comments mentioned taxes or taxation, homelessness and roads and infrastructure. Those were some common themes as well. I also wanted to note that health or healthcare or mental health was mentioned seven times in the comments. And this is a result that is used in some communities, but it was one that we left off of question one because Calhoun County provides the public health services for Battle Creek. And so this, since this isn't a service that we actually provide, we left that off. But people did bring that up as a potential result for us. And just to give some, some thoughts and context to what we saw in the results choices, especially given the pandemic that we've been working through. Safety and economy shouldn't come as a surprise. We have the pandemic and also the social justice movements that we have seen across the country and across the world since 2020. Education at first seemed a little surprising since the city doesn't have a direct impact on education, you know, the traditional thought of education are K-12 schools, KCC and the like. However, that has been a community priority for a lot of collaborative responses in the community like BC Vision, it's one of the United Ways priorities. And so certainly that's something we collaborate and support. Physical appearance also, and you can see additionally in the open ended comments, concerns about code compliance and code enforcement and making sure that our city looks its best. We've had a lot of concerns this spring about litter and what we can do to address that. You know, we had just had the linear park cleanup during Earth Day week and things like that. So what we are looking to do is hopefully to confirm six to eight of these results. And to use the community's input to help you do that. And even though we asked the community to give us their top eight. And you know, we, we've showed those broken out, the lower priority results can still inform and will inform and guide the work that we do on the results that we do confirm for the next five or so years. Diversity, equity, inclusion is a great example of that and community engagement. You know, just, just because those aren't in the, the top priority for the community. And even if the commission doesn't confirm those as some of our results going forward. Those are things that we will continue to do no matter what goals we're trying to reach. And just to conclude, I will say for everyone's benefit, the full survey result, results, excuse me, will be coming soon. I've got our website listed there where our priority based budgeting information is. The webpage right now shows our current results and additional information about PBB, which Chris and Eric went through. And also you can look through the, the budgeting tool on your own time, if you like, as Chris and Eric also referenced. So once we hold the second workshop with the commission and have confirmed results and definitions, those of course will go to the website as well and we will share those out. So I will hand it back to Rebecca, I think, for any questions and discussion.
I actually think I'm going to hand it to Chris. But thank you, thank you, Jessica. So I am going to turn it over to Chris to kind of guide our next discussion.
That is great. And I'll go back to the share, the coordinated dance of Zoom. And I'll move. I've got a dual screen, so moving your faces so I can see everybody. And opening up a chat for all the various ways that we can talk to each other. All right. Jessica, thank you. That was, I really appreciated your walkthrough. Again, and we've had a chance to, to look through some of the results. I did run a reiterate a couple of items as we get going here. One, just to make sure, like Eric says, it takes seven times before you say something and then it really resonates on the other side. So tonight is a discussion of the results only. And we're going to get into a discussion of the results definitions and workshop too. I think that's, hopefully everybody's hearing that one. Secondly, for all the work that we are doing right now on getting you towards new results and new result definitions. This is to inform, not this current budget cycle that you're in. But to arrive at results and definitions to inform the next go around as departments score their programs against these results. To inform what would be the, I guess, 2022 budget, I believe, Linda? Linda, I'm looking for a heads up. There you go. Cool. And just, I just want to make sure everybody knew that that is the case. So we're going to try to, we've gone through this exercise many times with Battle Creek and with others. And as we, as Jessica pointed out, we're trying to land on maybe six primary results up to eight. And you might be wondering, why six to eight? And our reason is specific to priority-based budgeting. You could have a thousand if, if you had some other objective. For priority-based budgeting, six to eight is a sweet spot. And I wanted to tell you why. We have had communities who have had more than eight. And what happens is, number one, it, Jessica pointed out, it creates a list of so many results, it's tough to understand what is actually a priority. What we've also seen is sometimes the results become redundant with one another. And so you're not actually coming up with six to eight. You're restating variations of a similar theme over and over again. And that impacts the priority of a program as it's scoring itself against a result that is simply restated in a different way. It can have an, an impact that skews your data in prioritization. Lastly, last but not least, it can be taxing on, on your participants, on the departments to go through and score programs against so many other result areas. And so we have tended, our guidance and our recommendation is to try to stick to no more than eight on the community result side. And then why, why no less than six? Sometimes we've had a community who had three results, three results. And it was a safety, economy, and health. And the downside of that is you end up with a lot of clumping is a term. Programs that score the same, there's not meaningful differentiation in order to prioritize anything with so few results. It tends to start looking like a yes or no question. Is it important? Is it not important? And that's, that's less helpful as well. So to arrive around six to eight is, is a sweet spot. That's why we're starting there. So with that in mind, and I'm mindful of the chat, but I think all the questions have been about the survey data. But I'm just trying to keep track of that as well. Eric and Brad can just grab my attention if I'm missing something really important. One thing you could do is simply agree on the top eight. Jessica had that in her slides and you could say, this is a reasonable place to end. And here are our top eight compared to all the results that we tested on. A second approach, you can say majority rule. And all I've done here is eliminate those that scored less than fifty percent. And you could say, here are our top six. So it's sort of convenient. You have your list of six. You have your list of eight. And those are perfectly reasonable places for you to end. And I will come back to that, that kind of option in just a moment. But what I wanted to do is lead you through some considerations and, and three tests, if you will, to help each of you individually start to think through these result outcomes from the survey and think through what you, what you personally believe are good results and any reasons that you might think of combining results or landing in a certain area. And that is what I want to spend a little bit of time doing. And the first test is the test of trying to look at the possible results. I've just moved it to the left-hand side of the page here and ask yourself, do these meet the criteria in your opinion for what a result is all about for priority-based budgeting? And the test is this. As you look at safety, as you look at economy, as you look at utilities, are these standalone reasons for the city of Battle Creek's existence? Or are they not? Is there anything that is creating a tension for you? And so as you look at especially maybe results seven and eight, the way to do this test is to say, physical appearance as a result. I want you to pause for a moment and think, do you believe, this is the test for a result, that the city collects tax dollars in order to provide programs that achieve this particular result and improve the physical appearance of Battle Creek? Some, it's not up to me to answer that question, but I want you to reflect on it. As you think about transportation and mobility, the eighth result, same question. For it to survive and, and be considered a core result, it's the exact same stated question. Do you believe that if you were in a conversation with a, with a resident that you would say the city is collecting a portion of your resources in order to provide programs that achieve greater mobility options and transportation within the city? And if your answer is yes, then that is good, that's a, a good sign that you believe that this is a appropriate result. And if your answer is no, then we move towards thinking about, well, it's still, still important. It's being recognized by a lot of people, but maybe it's a how. Maybe it's a, a result definition rather than a definition in and of itself. And, and I promise I'm going to give you time to reflect here in just a second. I want you to, because we're going to want your notes and we're going to want to talk about it. As you think about the remaining results, are there any results in the top eight or the top thirteen that fail this test for you? As you think about standalone reasons for your government's existence? This is a particular test. I, I'm going to put three minutes on a timer. And I want you to, to look through the thirteen results and to yourself ponder this, this particular test and identify if there are any results that fail this test for you. And we'll take, we'll take a little bit of feedback. So you're on the clock and I'm keeping track and I'll let you know. Got about a minute left. That is the Jeopardy timer. Rebecca, question for you for protocol for this meeting. Is it okay to take some general comments? Or save, save feedback until the, the end?
No, it's okay to take general comment because I don't, I think, Sarah, do we have any public that has joined us?
No, we've not, Rebecca.
Okay, so if it's okay with the mayor, I think we can take general comment. Because really what you have present would be our senior staff, commissioners, and then city manager's office staff.
Sounds great. Thank you for the protocol. Would anybody like to? We don't have to, my goal here is not to come to a conclusion on the results right now. We're going to go through two more tests and then really start to synthesize. But does anybody have any comments right now in terms of this particular test? Whether it's for physical appearance, transportation and mobility, or any of the thirteen results? Did anybody have a result that failed this test that is interesting to bring up? I see a hand. Oh, man.
Did I just unmute or do I need to wait to be called on? Thank you. I'm, I'm curious. I don't even know how to say it, so I'll just say it. Education, when we look at that, it is not something that the city offers, right? It's something that we may partner around. So for me, it feels like it doesn't fit here. I am curious why it was included, like how were the, how was it determined what would go into the survey in the first place? Because even the, the details related to that one feel like they're a little odd for what the city might provide or do.
I'll respond and Jessica, you're, anybody else, please jump in as well. So Polco is a company who does, who primarily serves local governments. And they also acquired a research company called the National Research Center, who also serves local governments. The National Research Center, for many years, I think they've, I believe they have over a thousand clients. Their primary reason for existence is to do surveying on what is, they do a national citizen survey, which I believe Battle Creek has done in the past. And of all of their data, the National Research Center has landed on what are the primary themes that lead to what citizens of the United States and North America consider a great quality of life? And some of these might be relevant to you and some of them might not be relevant to you. But that is the, the starting place. In other communities, they have the same puzzled look on their minds as they consider economic vitality. Because to them, their value system is such that they don't believe that's a local government thing to contribute to or have a role in. So the fact that this is striking you in the way that it is, is important. That you're wondering, I don't know, this doesn't seem like a result or something that we do.
And Chris, I can, I can jump in for that too. Commissioner Wilson, another reason that we did leave it is because of what I mentioned about the collaborations that the city is involved in around education. You know, the city has been involved in BC Vision and a big focus on that is education. We are involved with and, you know, support the United Way and their programs. And so one of their big focuses is education of the entire community. So the, it's, sorry, I lost the, I had another point there. But the, you know, the, the main point is just that, that collaborative and supportive nature of our community and education being one of those big focuses. And so we wanted to see what our community generally would think about supporting that as a priority.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Ferris. I also had that one stick out in my mind as something that, no, we don't exist as a city to educate the community. I think that we all agree that it's important to make sure that our, our residents are well-educated and, and that we promote that. But it's, it's not a reason for us to exist. And I also think that just in general, there might be a misconception in the community that somehow the city of Battle Creek is involved with local education. Not realizing that there are, you know, governance boards of each educational system here in town.
Great feedback.
Hi, Commissioner Morris. The one, well, education for me too, that was the first one that I wrote down. I was kind of confused because of the school boards. I was wondering where our role was in that. But when I took my survey, I rated arts and culture really high. But looking at it today, I was kind of confused about, does it fit into the first question?
Great feedback.
Something that stuck out to me also was not only education, but the environment and recreation. I know that when we're asking ourselves the questions that you had provided in here, Chris, to think about offering education, right? As my colleagues have stated, that's not something that we do. But listening to it and hearing it as something that helps guide our choices and our future, you know, thinking about how that can tie in with some of our recreation and summer programming. And you had talked about how we might tie things together. You know, hearing about number seven, the physical appearance, but tying that into the environment and how those might lump together. So my brain went, how do these tie together to meet a foundational six to eight results? So thank you for pointing that out for us to think that way.
Awesome. Any other, your feedback is awesome. I don't have to read my, my facilitator's notes because you've hit on the points that I would have raised if I was dealing with a totally quiet crowd, but you've already hit the observations that I had.
I have one more thing. This is Commissioner Ferris. I was surprised, community design, it was like at the very bottom. But that's a huge part of why we exist and, and what we, what we do as a city as far as planning and, you know, shaping the physical environment and also shaping what, what fills that environment as far as businesses and homes. So I was surprised that that was down low. And I also kind of combined it in my mind with physical appearance. Somehow conjoining the.
Great. Another helpful hint, as we, as we move from workshop one to workshop two, workshop two is going to be about definitions. Definitions are the how, how a result gets accomplished. And for what, a lot of the notes that I'm taking right now as it pertains to education, for example, is while education might not have struck a chord or resonated with, with many of you as a result in and of itself for the city of Battle Creek Local Government, it's easy to weave in result definitions that, that recognize its importance for your partnership role, for your support role. As you consider how does the health of the education system contribute to a healthy economy? Or a safer community overall? I wanted you to know that, that just because if, if education doesn't make the cut as a top central result area, we, we will definitely take it along with other areas like arts and culture, community design, and offer you ways in workshop two to consider how they fit in for result definitions. All right. Let's move on to test two. Thanks for your feedback. And between the three tests, some of them resonate more with people than others. Same results. The second test is. and we're talking about this theme, is it an end in and of itself? Or is it a means to an end? So we're asking, is it an end goal? Is it a central result or is it a how? Is it a why? Is it a how? There are different ways to try to address this question. So again, as you look at the entire population of results, are there any results that are more of a means to an end to you? Are they definitely a how issue? And we'll take, again, just a few minutes. I'll set the timer and see if there are any results that you jump out loud and clear as this is not our end goal, it's a means to an end. And I'll do a timer again, but please reflect. All right. Anybody care to share what they thought stood out to them as, as definitely more of a means to an end? A how?
Commissioner Wilson, I saw your hand and then Commissioner Morris. I'm trying to look at everybody's window, so.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Wilson. So the first two that jumped out to me super clearly was that diversity, equity, inclusion and community engagement are a means to an end. It'll be how we do things, right? I could also can almost convince myself that depending on how we approach education, it's also a means to an end. So if our partnership there is helping the community understand safety or the economy or understanding civic life, that could be a means to an end potentially as well.
Fantastic. Thanks for that.
Mr. Morris?
Commissioner Wilson stole both of mine actually. I approached them in two different ways. When I was looking at the diversity, equity and inclusion, I was looking at it like that's what we want our end goal to be. And we're not quite there yet, but with work we can reach that goal and we will not have to spend any more funds to make that goal because we'll already be there eventually. So that was the end for that. But then I thought about the community engagement in a different way. I thought about the community engagement as a means to the end. I figure we'll always need community engagement as long as we're improving our community. But she took both of mine, so.
So part of my notes to what you just mentioned, we've seen the diversity, equity, inclusion showing up among the cities who we're working with, sometimes as a why, sometimes as a how, sometimes as both. It's one of the few that depending on the community, it is an end goal. And then it's clearly a means to an end as you consider any of, of the result areas that are identified. So I really appreciate the point and just wanted you to know, we're seeing that a ton right now. Anybody?
Well, thanks Commissioner Herring or Commissioner Ferris, sorry.
No, it's, it's fine. Um, there's a lot of us to keep track of. It's hard to see everybody. I can't see everybody on one screen. I was thinking about arts and culture and I know that rates really high for me too. And the reason why is because it falls under that means to an end. So under, under that being a means to an end, what are those ends? So I was thinking that some of the ends for that might be education, recreation, the economic impact of having art and culture in our community and a physical appearance of our community. And how it is an umbrella under which all of these things fall.
It's another great point and I'm just taking notes because again, our commitment to you as we enter workshop two would be to try to recognize that what you just said, that it's clearly a means to an end. Even if it doesn't show up as an end in and of itself, how do we make sure that it's going to show up in the result definitions for the results like you just talked about? Or at least be up for a debate with the rest of the commission.
Commissioner Herring?
Thank you. I also feel that especially with mine, I felt that I rated arts and culture very high. And I do think that diversity, equity and inclusion and community engagement are going to be that means to an end. And I just feel that some of the ones that are at the top of this list are directly affected by diversity, equity and inclusion such as safety, economy, education, like they, they all tie in. So it's almost like the ones at the bottom of the list are important for the value of the ones at the top. And I just think that goes to directly show based off of the, it's the word, I lost my word, based off the, the results of who we received those surveys from. It shows directly that, you know, the lack of BIPOC people in that directly affects what is found to be important in our community. And that's something we definitely have to work on.
Thanks for that feedback. Loud and clear on the, at least a means, at least a strong pivotal means to an end for incorporating it into the result definitions. And you can see it. Take transportation. Almost any result has an influence on another result. If you took transportation, many organizations, I think even Battle Creek had safe transportation, whether that's vehicular or trails and bikeways, pedestrians. That has everything to do with safety. You could have transportation as a means to economic vitality. The, the fact that at least diversity, equity, inclusion, arts and culture, community engagement, they're not, it's not that they're not resonating. There's clearly support for them and we need to make sure that they get incorporated into the, the definitions. Okay, third, third test, I think we're, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I just had one more that I missed when I spoke the first time, so I was so anxious. I actually see governance potentially also as a means to an end. And I forgot to mention that the first time I was talking. I think it is how we do what we do. So.
Thanks for bringing that up and I should have done a better job of clarifying governance in priority-based budgeting vocabulary is, is something specific. It's about the responsibility of the internal departments who don't serve your community members directly. But it's without, without governance being strong, you're right, all of the other results are at risk. If you're, if the mechanism of providing local government services to your community, if you don't have a great finance department, city manager, communications office, legal, purchasing, risk, fleet, et cetera, then the, your ability to deliver on those services is jeopardized. And so the focus of what we've been talking about today is definitely centered on community results. Governance did start to show up. And we'll have a different track for the, the governance, the internal results against which your internal services get scored. And that's a nuance of priority-based budgeting that probably wasn't super clear or obvious. Okay, one more test. This is fun. We're seeing some major themes emerge. So this is really helpful for us as facilitators to give you some reflection. The last one's a redundancy test. And the idea here, super simple. Are there any results that you see that seem like they're not distinct from another result? Or they're so intrinsically related, it doesn't make sense that they're separate to you? The important part about this test is that there might be some opportunities to combine concepts if you feel that that is appropriate. So hopefully, if there's anything jumping out at you that is not distinct or is so closely related to another result area that you want to consider it for combination, that's the idea here. And I'll put us on a timer. All right, your last timer. And the last, last test. You didn't know you were going to be tested today. But this was test three, redundancy test. And again, would just love to open it up if this resonated with anybody. If you, if you wanted to share any result areas that just seemed too related to another one where you have a recommendation for a combination.
Hi, I'm back. No, I'm just kidding.
Hello.
It was the physical appearance for me. I felt like physical appearance related closely to both community design and environment.
Ditto.
When we have a ditto, all right. An environment.
Is it a thrito? I don't know what the third, I'll, I'll third that.
You have to Webster that when you say that. Webster.
We can make that four.
Quid.
I see. It's ditto, thrito, quattro, quatri do, something like that.
Cinco.
Five.
You got, you got five Chris, maybe six.
Wow. Fantastic. Um, there's no problem at all. So, and we'll show you this when we get into the workshop two. When you take two concepts and they have definitions that people weighed in on and then you merge them, you're basically saying it's, it's simply not standalone. You're taking all things into consideration in one particular result area. And so I've, I've got physical appearance. We already had community design as potentially a means to an end before. But we can come back with what physical appearance, community design and environment look like together. And you'll still have the opportunity when we talk about definitions to have one more reconsideration. When you see it all together versus seeing it apart, I think you'll, it'll have one more opportunity to say, do you really think that it's totally different? As you start to incorporate the definitions, but the note is definitely taken. And it was heavily emphasized by at least five, five people. So great, great observation. Any others? I think I hear a small child trying to weigh in. Could be from my end, I'm not sure. Fantastic. Um, this was a, a different way to get your opinions on how do we land on the six to eight? Where I was going to, to land at the end of all this was to say, if this had gone terribly, horribly wrong over the last few, over the last three tests, we, I would have brought you back to say, do you want to just go with the 50% rule and move forward? But instead you gave us a lot of great feedback. I, I, I believe that it's going to be appropriate. I'm just going to tell you what I think I've heard, that education is going to move to a means to an end. I believe environment, we're going to show you what it looks like to have environment, physical appearance and community design brought together as one, one result area. And that for diversity, equity, inclusion, arts and culture and community engagement and education, that as we engage in workshop number two to talk about definitions, those, these concepts will not go away. The results will be incorporated as result definitions to consider in workshop two. I, therefore, I feel like what, where we are right now is that it's safe to say that is that it's safe to say that safety, economy, the utilities, the environment, incorporated with physical appearance, recreation and transportation and mobility options are, are resonating very strongly as standalone results, uh, as coming out of these, these three tests. That's my synthesis of, um, what we've talked about. And again, I don't, I don't want to put you in a position where it's like, can we take a vote? But I, I think that's what we're hearing in order to allow us to proceed to workshop two, which is to start to bring back result definition concepts around those central result areas. You, you can, you will have the chance to refine, uh, edit, reconsider. So this isn't finality, but I, I think that's the progress we've made. But I'll stop to see if you believe that that's true as well.
I think that's a good area to stop. And Rebecca, do you want to conclude by saying anything and thanking our presenters tonight?
Um, well, I did, I'd make sure there's no more slides, Chris. Do you have slides? Okay.
That's it.
No, I know, I think so. But, um, I know that we had a member of the public join. So I didn't know if you wanted to do a public comment moment, mayor, and then I can, we, I can summarize and make sure that we know kind of our next step.
All right, we'll go to a public comment and then I'll come back to you, Rebecca. Sarah, do you have a member of the, uh, public that would like to make a comment?
Um, I, we do have a caller in this meeting with us and caller with the last four digits of five, eight, five, five. If you'd like to press star six to unmute yourself, um, please just state your name and you can go ahead and make public comment.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hi, my name is, uh, Justin Andert. Uh, I'm the founder and director of the Color of the Creek here in Battle Creek. Um, I'm speaking tonight as a, an advocate of the arts and I was appreciative to hear, uh, some of the feedback from the commissioners tonight, regarding the survey results. And, um, yeah, agreed with a number of things people said about how the lower category, uh, what lower priority category should help guide the higher priority areas. And so with the, uh, in terms of arts and culture, that's really what I was here to, uh, talk about and really advocate for. And I think there's kind of a need to really, uh, broaden the support and investment in that within the city. And so really, uh, just wanted to be a supporter of that and, um, had a couple of ideas, but really just, uh, was appreciative to hear the conversation today. And I hope that, um, excited to hear how things keep going with this conversation. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your constructive comments. We appreciate everything that you've done in our community. And once again, thank you for just calling in. It's nice to have someone like this once in a while. Rebecca, I'm going to turn it back over to you to thank everyone and then we'll conclude the meeting.
Sure. I just want to make sure for Chris or Eric, is there any wrap up you want to do before I do?
I, I don't want to disturb any of the progress that's been made. This is, this is, you guys did a great job.
Well, okay, I, I do appreciate that. And I appreciate the comments of the commissioners because, you know, when you put a community survey out there and some of us who were involved in the 2015, 2016, you, you, you kind of, we always knew that overall, the community results probably wouldn't change a great deal. But you can see, and I appreciate in your, in all the commissioners thoughtful comments and all of the comments that we received from the survey, you know, really helped to inform even those that didn't necessarily make the top eight. Um, but you could tell have played into kind of what we're considering as, you know, why we do what we do or why we exist as a, as a unit of local government. And so I know from a staff perspective, this is incredibly helpful. Um, I know that, you know, the definitions part is kind of our, our next goal. We are working to get that meeting, um, scheduled. So I think you are, you all received that, um, doodle poll and we want to finalize that date, not too far out because, you know, we want this fresh in your mind, what we've done to come to, to synthesize our results. And then how we choose to define those specifically or, you know, particularly the ones, for example, the, um, uh, the environment, the physical appearance and the community design, what that looks like. As we try to, to perhaps create that as one community result, and then how do you define something like that? So we will continue to work as a senior staff, um, to support this and work with Chris, Eric and Bradley, the Resource X team, to then prepare for our results definitions work. So appreciate everybody being available tonight and for all of the input. Thank you commissioners who, um, retook the test. We certainly will utilize that in, uh, this information as well.
Are there any questions of Rebecca or any comments by the commission? Once again, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight and this will adjourn our meeting. And we have a city commission meeting Tuesday night, so we'll see everyone on Zoom Tuesday night. Bye.
Thank you.